Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee at the home meeting for February 20, 2024. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerks again to be able to call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Yes, here.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We are entering now the town hall portion of the committee. If anyone would like to address the committee portion of this meeting, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes. I see no one in the room here. Anyone online want to address the committee?
Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. Moving along to standing committee reports. First one, building and zoning committee chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight we have Allen Horticulture. The petitioner is requesting to amend the Blue Heron Business Park Annexation Agreement and Plan Development to redesign the property at the northeast corner of Miles Parkway and West Bartlett Road to develop an area one, development area one, to allow the construction of a building and contractor yard for landscaping contractor equipment. Allen Horticulture, the original Blue Heron Business Park Annexation Agreement, and PUD establishment for development areas, each with different bulk regulations and allowable use lists. I'm going to turn it now over to Kristi Stone.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. This was before you as a concept plan a few months ago. Planning and zoning reviewed the plans. They recommended approval with the additional condition that they use the West Bartlett Road corridor lights for their front parking lot, which the petitioner has agreed to do. They do have, they've added faux second-story windows to really give this more of an office building look versus an industrial look since it is along West Bartlett Road.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
All right.
That's good.
That said, we'll, we'll send this off to the Plan Commission for approval.
This will come to the village board for a public hearing on the amended annexation agreement in March, as well as for final approval.
All right. Any issues with that?
You can do both those in the same meeting, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Community and Economic Development Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item. We have the branding concept. So we're developing a new community brand. It's one of the goals of the village's strategic plan. This new branding concept will be used to create positivity within the community as well as bring more traction to the community in the economic development sense via tourism and new business. In 2022, staff crafted an RFP RFQ for community branding, combining elements with several other communities, which resulted in seven inquiries. The samples were brought to the EDC for the recommendation, and A5 Branding was unanimously recommended to the board. The village board contracted with A5, and tonight they will present several different concepts for the board to review. These concepts were developed with significant preliminary work, including community surveys, roundtables, interviews, and attendance at community events. The board has requested to choose a campaign theme for the village's new community brand, and I'll turn that over to A5.
Thank you, trustee Gansey. Thank you to the trustees tonight, to staff. It's great to see you. I'm John Harris from A5 Branding and Digital. I've been before you a few times, and my colleague Matt Robby. In your packets was the full research that was gathered from over 1,000 people, residents and non-residents, visitors to Bartlett. So you have that in your packet. We're just going to flip through those and stop on a few slides, maybe three, four, or five max, and then get to the three different brand campaign concepts for y'all to see and review and to get your input tonight. So with that, Matt will flip through the research. Matt will flip through the research.
Okay. We can do it manual if you'd like.
Point it at Kristi.
All right, we've gone through the goals. We've gone through the year one, year two objectives. Can you stop right here?
Yeah.
So 1,000 people responded?
Yes.
Residents and visitors?
Yes, 1,022 complete surveys.
And of 1,022, 499 responded to the, I think it's the next slide, right there. No, no, it's the one that breaks it down between.
There we go.
Right there. So if we add the village and then community, are we going to get 1,022 responses there? So how are we getting these?
Additional slides. There's several slides that break it all up.
Is that normal? Is 1,022 responses of a village this size normal?
This is an exceptional response from the community.
Exceptionally good?
Exceptionally good, yes. We've done this many times, and I would say the only comparable was probably Northbrook. And, and so with Northbrook and Bartlett, the, the response was exceptionally good.
Thank you.
And, and you could see from that list, too, just the diversity, just by connecting with U46, for example, with BAPS at various community events through the village's channels. We reached a wide variety of people from all corners of the village.
And we did make sure with U46, we specifically took Bartlett schools. We didn't go outside of the Village of Bartlett with U46, with the help of Communications Department of U46.
Why did you choose not to go outside of Bartlett?
That was just a, we wanted to make sure that the feedback we received was specifically geared towards the Bartlett residents.
We have a lot of Bartlett residents that go to schools outside of Bartlett.
Oh, sorry. Let, let's answer it a different way. The, with the Bartlett schools, the folks were in the schools who are from Bartlett. So...
It's not just Bartlett High School.
I don't see the Park District at all here.
We tried several times to connect with the Park District. We were met with no response whatsoever from phone calls, emails, help from the village staff. We never received any participation from the Park District. It wasn't due to a lack of effort. Again, as John mentioned, this is all in your packet. So you've seen this, what we've heard during our interviews, challenges that we've heard, what the survey conducted, survey, I'm sorry, there's research that was received from the survey. As you can see, the two biggest reasons people want to live in Bartlett, the safety of small town. Why people moved to Bartlett was housing, family and friends, and, and location to work. Again, you've seen all this in your research packet. We'll just get to the meat of what we came for.
Thirty-nine percent, 39.1% of respondents said that they get their information from social media. Is that pretty standard, then?
That's a great question. It is increasingly standard, yes. Social media, word of mouth is general, will generally be the top two in communities in which we've worked. Yes, will it work? Okay, sorry, this is... So there were several takeaways from the research and engagement, and we're just gonna walk through where we landed based on the research. That Bartlett is a place that's welcoming to people. It's a safe community. It's community-driven. People are getting involved in Bartlett and want to make the village better. Outdoor living is important here, whether that's Bartlett Hills, or Villa Olivia, or Pate Phillip State Park, or walking and biking trails, et cetera. The location is convenient with Metra, access to O'Hare, and to the city, and other suburbs, outstanding village services, and the Bartlett schools are strong. So as we started to develop the campaign concepts, again, based on what we heard from you and from the community, our recommendation is to lean into the strengths of safety, of a diverse tax base, of a growing downtown, the outdoor activity opportunities, that small-town feel that you still have even with the growth that occurred over decades, the strong civic groups, and the community diversity. From some of the things that folks said, hey, we could do a little bit better on in Bartlett, we want to get creative with those. So when we talk about schools, let's talk about the strengths of the Bartlett schools, the students, the faculty, the parents, the administration. There's plenty of locally-owned restaurants and retail, and people gave us those names and by the dozens. Brewster Creek was referenced as something that we could lean into and get creative in terms of promoting that so that there's greater awareness inside and outside Bartlett. The family-friendly aspects of Bartlett promote that downtown, and then capitalize on some of the smaller events throughout the village. The large events were recognized, the Fourth of July National Night Art, National Night Out. Some of the smaller events didn't get quite as much recognition. Capitalizing on opportunities with Aldi helping the downtown filling a need, uniting both sides of the community, this sometimes perceived gap of the Route 59 divide, focus on being welcoming and inclusive, creating ownable events that tap into the outdoors, the downtown, and the civic group strengths, and then the TIF and gateway and wayfinding signage so that you know when you're entering, exiting, and traversing through the village. And then the bike and pedestrian friendly aspect came through in the research as well. So with that, we're going to go into the three campaign concepts and then get your feedback on this. We'd love your direction tonight on which one that you prefer. Concept A is this idea of belonging in Bartlett. And you can see we're utilizing existing colors that fit with the community's identity already. So it would be a natural transition and, and adjustment to, to work with these colors. And we're just going to give you a few samples here so you could see how it might be applied. You could see, you know, family and happy people eating ice cream, and this idea that we belong in Bartlett. It's flexible for use inside the community, for community building, and for external use. So from an economic development standpoint, business attraction, as well as retention, and for welcoming visitors or encouraging visitors to come in, too. So the belong in Bartlett is the base, and it can become you belong in Bartlett for attraction, and we belong in Bartlett for internal use. Man, this thing is touchy. So some sample uses also, so you could see, you know, restaurants and food, and people gathered around the table on the left, another ice cream and outdoor shot, and people bicycling on the right. But this will give you a sense of how that would unfold, and, and how important it is to connect the campaign concept, the belong in Bartlett concept, with colors, with typography, with imagery. Sample social media posts, so a more brewing, a social media post, for example, on the left, and a wedding at Bartlett Hills on the right. So it might be that story on the left, find out why more brewing belongs in Bartlett. And on the right, you belong together, have your wedding at Bartlett Hills. So you could see how it sort of all hangs together in whatever message or story that we're trying to tell. Another one, this is, the one on the left is actually a Village of Bartlett shot. Actually, the one on the right is as well. So there's some existing photography that can be used. We do recommend that as we get into the warmer months that we get some new photography, and we love a strong focal point. So I, I prefer the shot on the left. It sets a nice mood and tone, and you've got a clear focal point with a couple of people there. The one on the right, wonderful foursome, but would love to see a little bit stronger of an image so that it looks special and it looks like it's from Bartlett. So that's it for Concept A. There it is. It did work. Hang on. Okay. I knew there was one more. So this is a sample ad. This could be a print ad. It could be a digital ad. It could be a postcard. But this copy is important here. So it's sample copy, but it gives you an idea of the kind of tone or field that we'd try, we'd be trying to get. It's professional yet friendly. So when you live in Bartlett, it's easy to understand why. It feels like a small town, even though it's grown a lot over the years. It's safe. It's welcoming. It's filled with adventures, events, and experiences. It's home, and you belong. And we could create a microsite if we want, belonginbartlett.com, or hang it off the village site slash belonginbartlett. So Concept B is the idea of better in Bartlett. And you can see here, we've used multiple images in this approach. So you, you might like the multiple images, or you might like the other, you know, the other conceptual direction. And to some extent, we could certainly mix and match on these. But the idea of, of life is better here in Bartlett, or visiting here is better, starting, running, growing your business is better in Bartlett. So this one is, is, you know, more focused on economic development. So, I mean, we have, you know, kettles for brewing, but we also have an industrial type of shot. And you could see incorporating a map in here. And you'll also notice that we added Illinois in here, too. So that, that is, will, will be important maybe in Illinois, but particularly outside of Illinois. And this might be something that's nature-focused. So we could build themes around economic development, around the outdoors, all of, around schools. There's lots of ways to build this out and to show that it's better in Bartlett. And you could see the texture, too. The type is the same. It's a, a contemporary sans serif font. So it'll play well now. It'll play well over, over a number of years. But we could use a texture behind it to give it a little bit more flair. Social media posts, a couple of samples. It's better in Bartlett. The one on the right says, you know, would be a testimonial. So we could build that into from a residence, from business owners, from visitors. But, you know, it's the idea of I belong to the temple, and when I first came here, I was welcomed in Bartlett, and feel a great sense of belonging. Some alternates. Anybody who's in marketing, you typically have a good, better, best strategy. So this could be the better and best. So it could be better. It could be way better. Or it could be be your best in Bartlett. So those are options for your consideration. And Concept C, no alliteration in Concept C. So good for us. It's a little self-congratulatory, a little bit more about me, or I, or us. But it also sends a signal that we're doing well here. So adventures, events, and experiences. When you live in Bartlett, it's easy to understand why. It feels like a small town, even though it's grown a lot over the years. It's safe. It's welcoming, filled with adventures, events, and experiences. Good for us. This could be also good for you. We're not showing that, but we could spin it out that way as well. And this, this font is a little bit different, too. It's a little more traditional. It's, it's a serif font. So it's, it's still contemporary, but it, it looks like it's been around for a good long time. And then adding the color behind it adds a level of personality. This could be a, an ad in Heartland Real Estate, or ICSC, you know, going, going to these shows, et cetera. But, you know, here's a testimonial from a business owner, in this case downtown, with a strong portrait. And a call to action, call Tony. A sample postcard. And again, you're seeing here different types of imagery that we could utilize that makes Bartlett look inviting, look special, look different, a place that you'd want to be, whether you want to visit, start a business, or live here. So those are the three concepts we have for you tonight. Be happy to take questions and then get your comments.
When you're going through this, the one thing that I would like to see in the branding personally is that the name Bartlett is there. And option number three, good for us, Bartlett, Illinois. Bartlett is diminished, okay? I would like, you know, just looking at that, the one I'd have to pick right now, if, you know, is just better in Bartlett. But option C, I, I don't see that as being anything spectacular. It doesn't, it doesn't get me excited at all. So...
So are we changing the signs that say progress with pride?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, too.
I thought we were, I thought we were keeping that. We are, okay.
It's brand.
This is our brand. I liked the, the fonts on option B.
Okay.
But quite frankly, none of these really hit me too much. But the, the, on option B, the, the pictures and the layouts, I, I did like those. Like that, I think that's a good one right there, and that's a nice one.
I don't like the application of that, though. It's really hard.
Hmm?
The application of it is very hard. I don't know. Like, I don't, I don't feel like that fits with, like, what we're trying to...
Yeah, these photos, these photos are really, the one on the left particularly is really saturated. So that's a, it's a...
The biking, the bike, the outdoor biking, I think is a nice...
I'm not a big fan of just using the word better. I, I, I like we belong better than I like better.
Yeah. I also like, feel like the messaging of having something like, we, then you can use you, so it's like you can reach outwards, if you create a campaign to, like, draw, like, you know, people in, or if you're at, like, a trade show, try to draw people in. Like, the third one, I felt like was very, like, good for us, like, we're in this bubble. Don't come here.
Yeah. We belong is opening and, and inviting. And you could use that for the, I mean, people could jump on that for our community groups as well, like the Lions Club, and the Rotary, and the Chamber. They could, they could tag along with that stuff. You belong, we belong. I really would love to see more play on the small-town feel. You know, you could, you could have something that you belong, something about small-town feel, big-town dining, small-town feel, big-town adventure, small-town feel, big-town community engagement. Just that play off of small-town feel, big-town amenities.
You know...
One of the people that...
This is Joe.
Yeah.
Another thought, another thought is, you are Bartlett. So a part of the we belong, you belong, like, you are Bartlett. The people that live there are Bartlett.
You have, you have six trustees up here, and I can guarantee you...
None of us are...
None of us are going to agree.
I was underwhelmed by the, the three examples because I agree with trustee Dany that Bartlett needs to be the focal, the focal point of any advertisement or any social media thing. That's why I asked if we're getting away from our general logo. So I just, and I also was just curious where the purple came from.
Right, me too. What is that?
It's blue.
I actually wrote purple down.
I mean, it was just...
I, I guess like...
I had a...
There are different shades of blue. It is showing up as purple. I'm, you're right, I'm seeing purple here, too. But it's, it's a, it's a blue.
It just doesn't scream community as, as much as I, like, it doesn't call it out, you know?
I guess I'd like to see the application, like, when you go to the one slide where you're using it for economic development, like, how, I'd like to see how that's, like, carried through.
We don't have each application for each concept here, but if this were, if this were an economic development piece, you know, we could, obviously, this one on the left would be used for attraction. Right now, you're seeing it as a social media post. But if we go to the next concept, you'd see it, well, I mean, this could be, if you, if you changed the photographs, and you made that we belong in Bartlett, you belong in Bartlett, right? So if it was photos of industry or business, it would be you belong in Bartlett, and then the copy, and then the call to action.
Let me ask you, do you want feedback from us on, should we, are we talking about possibly eliminating one of these, or...
Sure. I mean, if we can get, if we can get to one, great. But if we, if we do it in reverse and we eliminate one, then we're down to two.
I think...
But I would, I would like to get a consensus from the board that one, good for Bartlett, you know, that part C.
Good for us.
Number C.
Good for us.
Good for us, yeah. I would like to, Concept C, I think, I would like to see if we could eliminate that one.
Yeah. I'll agree with you, Ray.
Eliminate good for us. I would eliminate better, too. I think we belong has, it had, had some good warm feelings when you were going through that. I had some good warm feelings about we belong. There's a, there's a, there's, there's a lot in that statement. You know, you can go so many different directions with we belong or you belong.
Like what Joe said, you are Bartlett.
I liked that, too.
You belong. I mean, you could do both. I mean, you are Bartlett, you belong. I don't...
I think we should post it to social media, because I think we would get a lot of feedback.
That's not a...
Yes, I, that was actually gonna be one of my questions, like, how do you do some, like, testing?
Your decision.
Before, like, we roll out an entire campaign, like, how do you do your testing before you?
We could test it with a couple of groups.
Okay.
We, yeah, we could do that. Social media, you know, I, I don't think it's any surprise to folks, but people will tend to focus on the negative versus the positive. So if we're going to test it, it would be good to test it with a couple of groups who are, who are, think positively of Bartlett and are engaged or want to get more engaged, again, to help make the community better.
Why, why can't we do that, then? Just use Concept A and Concept B? General consensus.
At the Rotary Club meeting.
Yeah. General consensus with the board is, no one seems to be in favor of Concept C. So if we could maybe do that with Concept A and Concept B, and get some feedback.
And maybe clean up that purple slash blue.
Can I get your comments on Concept B? Because I don't think anybody really talked about it. I have several people talking about liking belong. I actually have, you know, Mayor and Stephanie and Joe liking that. But I don't, we didn't get any comments really on B, other than the font comment.
I felt like Bartlett, yeah, was just, it was just the better in Bartlett's too hard language.
Yeah.
I don't know. Just, it looks like a stamp.
It's more of a statement about Bartlett, whereas you belong, or we belong, or I belong is that invitation in.
I don't want to ruin...
First one is warmer.
...invitation with our neighboring communities, you know?
Well, I, I also feel like, like, the first one, like, when I think about it, like, using it to, for, like, economic development, it's kind of like opening up a conversation where just, like, I'm better, kind of shutting it down. That's, like, I feel like the copy that would follow with the other ones would be more like, I'm, you're talking with someone? I'm, you're talking with someone, or you're, like, if Tony were to go out and he has all this collateral and the way the copy's written, it's going to be like, "We're ready to have a discussion with you."
Paula, did you get the feedback that you were asking for on "better" in Bartlett?
It just seems to me like there's a consensus around "belong." I haven't heard anybody making a pitch for the other two.
Well, the way that social media works, and I think most of the people that did the survey probably aren't on social media because they're older, but it doesn't seem like it's impossible to do a month of "we belong" type ads and see what kind of response you get, and a month of "life is better" type ads or whatever, and see what kind of response you get.
I think that might be confusing. I'm concerned about rolling out a branding campaign that they've already seen pieces of. I think it's better that we make a decision and bring one out. Now, if you want to take, take one and send it back to the EDC and say, flush this out around this theory or around this theme, we'd like to see something a little more, we can certainly do that, but I'm, I'm hesitant to take pieces out to the community ahead of time.
Okay.
Paula, that makes sense. If we could take, I would be in favor of taking concept A and concept B back to the EDC and have their input. I'm not in favor, and I will not support concept C at all. I think it misses the point totally, in my opinion, but I could live with either A or B. But I sure would like to have some input from the EDC.
They haven't seen this at all, the EDC.
When you go to other communities and you're up against the same thing that you're up against now, what kind of feedback do you typically get from the board? Are the trustees kind of all over the place? Does staff have a little bit more input? What kind of stuff do you guys typically run against?
Certainly, we've had several meetings with staff and presented different concepts, and four concepts presented and three, three shown here tonight. I would say this is, you're seeing it new, fresh, and you may have your own ideas of what, you know, we might be coming in with tonight, right? So I think it's, it's helpful to see it, to contemplate it a little bit, but I think it's also, what we're hearing is, is support for the "we belong," "you belong" in Bartlett. Clearly, no support for the third concept, and that's okay, right? Because we, we need to get to one. But there seems to be more support for this, and we're quite confident that we can build this out, so it'll have, you know, the gravitas, but also the, the energy and the call to action. And, and do like the statement that the trustee on, on the Zoom call made. We could, we could work that into the copy. It might end up being part of the punctuation or part of the call to action.
Is there a certain number of letters that you're trying to keep it to when it's in the center like that? I mean, it seems like that's the same across the board. Are you trying to keep it minimal?
Oh, you mean, you mean inside the, the square?
The word "belong Bartlett," you know, "you belong Bartlett, in Bartlett." Just, are you trying to keep it, have you thought something? Because I, I just keep getting hooked on what Joe, trustee Laporte said, like, "You are Bartlett, we are Bartlett." I mean, those two kind of go hand in hand. You're sending it to somebody, you're telling them, "You are Bartlett." It comes to you, you know you're part of the community, because "we" encompasses that, so.
I like that branding, yeah.
I just think, you know, if you had "You are Bartlett" on top, "We are Bartlett" on the bottom, I think, to me, that encompasses more than just people we're trying to lure in. It also talks to the people that live here.
Right, right, uh huh, yeah. Absolutely explore that.
And then maybe use some photos from around town or different civic organizations, familiar faces. You know, one of the nice things about our community is when you go to the grocery store, you see somebody, when you go to 120 Live, you see somebody. And, and familiar faces in the ads, that wouldn't hurt anything. Or a Lions Club photo, or a Rotary Club photo, St. Peter Damien photo.
Yes, that's, that's part of, part of the plan, you're, you're dead on, and that's what we would want to do. Right now, we have a few photographs that work for the library. These, all four, three or maybe all four of these are stock. We would absolutely want to do Bartlett photos so that you see the place and you see the people. This, this will really come to life, like you said, when you see the owners and patrons, right? Whether it's the, whether it's the, whether it's history, or schools, or, you know, a restaurant, or whatever it is, it will all be local. It'll be from enough Bartlett.
You know what?
Also, cap Pam at the museum, cap Pam at the museum for some historic photos every now and again.
Right.
Perfect.
You know, one of the things that we talked about early on, or I know I did for sure, is that's a great picture of the wedding, and, you know, what comes to mind when I see that? You know, we have weddings at Villa Olivia, we have weddings at Bartlett Hills, we have that 18-hole golf course that's owned by the village. I'd like to see something to incorporate a photograph or something that would incorporate Bartlett Hills.
Yeah, for sure. So, so both of these, the first one is a wedding, that's an actual Bartlett shot. So that, that would advertise, you know, have your wedding here in Bartlett. And in this case, it's Bartlett Hills, but to your point, it could be one of a number of places. And this one, again, what we'd want to do is, we want to gather those four and bring them to the four. Okay, yes, it's a golf ritz.
You know that that's not Ray, because he's in the middle of the fairway.
I think, like, going back to like our overall goal, like, whatever look is, our overall goals are, like, what would we say the number one goal is with this, right now? Like, is it when Tony goes out to trade shows or we're speaking with?
I think the number one goal is to have a unified message. We have a lot of fragmented messages right now. And so I think what, I don't think you can make a bad decision, but I think it's important that we have something that has a common thread running all through it, and so that it's kind of a unified message. We haven't had that in a while.
Well, Paula, are you suggesting, then, that we take the, the concepts back to EDC?
No.
Okay. I don't understand.
She wants us to pick one and go with it, or tweak one.
What would you pick, Paula?
I like "we belong."
I like that.
I think it fits, it fits, it fits like the psyche, I think, of town. To me, it's welcoming, to Stephanie's point, it, it pulls you in, and it invites the conversation, and it's engaging. We can certainly, once John and Matt have an opportunity to flush out, you know, the actual pieces, we can bring those to the ED, EDC first, if you would like that, so that you have some basis of, you know, some more discussion, you know, like we would bring, you know, whatever we bring to the EDC before you, you have that, those minutes behind it. We can do that as well.
Well, one of the things you can do with the concept that trustee Laporte and trustee Gunstein added was you can still use "we belong," but instead of "Bartlett," say "we belong," "we are Bartlett" underneath it.
Right, that.
"We belong, we are Bartlett," in different aspects, in different ads, in different ways.
Together all the time. Don't suffer it, like, we are, "we belong and you belong." That would be together, like President Wallace said, as the statement. I think that encompasses a little bit more of what we're trying to do. I was gonna ask the same question, who we're targeting with the postcards and stuff. That was something that I was gonna ask about that, I couldn't remember.
There's, the idea is that this would, should work for resident retention and attraction, so building a stronger sense of community, that unified message that Paula mentioned. For businesses, we'll use it for retention, so the local businesses should feel the love because there's a story about them and their commitment to Bartlett, and why they're different, special, and, and also for, for attraction. So when the village is going out and doing economic development attraction, folks will recognize the name, they'll see the, the campaign, they'll understand the messaging at a very high level, and then, you know, want to engage and learn more. And then from a visitor standpoint, too, there's, there's opportunities, again, by saying that, you know, "you belong, I belong, we belong" in Bartlett. And then adding, you know, again, if, if, we'll, we'll work on adding that line in that you guys just talked about.
I feel like that could even be added, like in copy. That could even be added in advertising copy.
Yeah, it could be, it could be the end, it could be the punctuation. I think that's the thing, it's like, set it up and then pay it off, you know? Here's the invitation, and then.
Can you scroll to, can you scroll a little bit, please?
Scroll.
Like, I, yeah. Like, I like what's written there.
Yeah, it could be, for example, you know, and right now, it's a little small, but it could be bigger where it says, "Be at your best in Bartlett." I do like the idea also, we are, at the outset of the campaign, it'll be important to set the tone with, with the unified message and campaign, but we could also look at separating the blocks. I think that's part of, part of something that we could look at. But at the outset, you'd certainly want to, want to make sure that we achieve consistency.
So I like what trustee Gunstein and trustee Laporte said, but I, I really like having a verb within it. So I like, I would like to use what they said, like, in copy, but like the "belong" part.
Have we had enough discussion on this?
I guess I'd like to see some application for like economic development purposes, not, like this, you know, to me is like the feel-good residence, residents using messages for our events. I'd like to see with the "we belong," the application, how we would talk for economic development.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely, we could do that as part of the next, you know, go economic development with "you belong" in Bartlett. Or, and "we belong," again, because "we belong" is already, they're already here, right? We've, we've come to Bartlett and we belong in Bartlett. Any other questions or comments?
Good, there's some great ideas there. Fantastic.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it, great to see you, thank you.
All right. And it's the. Nothing else.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Finance Committee Chairman Laporte, if he's on the phone. I'm sure that you're working hard down in New York City.
Yeah, we have the exciting topic of water and sewer funds. We will be talking about, water and sewer rates are reviewed each year during the budget process. The current water rate has been in effect since May 1st, 2023, and the sewer rates have been in place since May 1st, 2022. Based on the April 30th, 2024 estimated water fund balance, no increase in the rate is being proposed for the '24, '25 fiscal year. The higher-than-expected fund balance is a result of an increase of about 3% in water consumption. We had an increase in interest income, and we deferred a few projects. So no sewer rate increases are, increases are being proposed as well. Increased revenue from charges for services and interest income, along with the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, have resulted in an estimated April 30, 2024 balance of $5,677,563. Rates will continue to be reviewed on an annual basis, and increases will be needed in the future to fund the capital improvement, plan, and ongoing debt obligations. If there's any questions, we can defer those to Todd. And this is also part of our strategic goal, where we will maintain checks and balances to ensure financial stewardship.
Fantastic.
Todd, I have a question for you. The last time that the water rates were increased, the sewer rates were increased, I, I see the dates, I know when, when, when in effect, what was the percentage increase that we had? Do you remember that offhand?
Yeah, the water rates were last increased effective May 1, 2023, that was a 3% increase.
3%, that was on water?
Yeah.
What was this?
Sewer rates were not raised last year, I, they were raised the, the prior year, and they are different depending on DuPage County and Cook County. It was in the 5%, I believe, in Cook County, and in the 8 to 8.5% in DuPage County.
Can you talk to us a little bit about why there's different rates for the different counties?
Sure, in DuPage County, what we were raising the rates for, we were gearing up for is the IEPA loan, the 7, $37 million IEPA loans. And we started raising those rates at the same time that we started raising the Cook County rates, and the purpose for that was for the bonds that were issued, the 2019 bonds that were issued for the Devon Avenue project.
Todd, I remember, I, I didn't remember the percentages, but I do remember that people had come to me and asked, you know, why we had a 5%, increase in Cook County and 8% in DuPage, and, and actually with the water, 3%. And they, they, I was asked, why don't we have just incremental little increases? You know that the rates are ultimately going to have to be increased, but I, I sure don't want to see where we'd have to have another 5% or 8% increase, or a 3% increase. If we tweak those like a quarter of a percent or a half a percent, then the, that, we, we wouldn't be confronted with a larger increase. Does that make sense? Some, that's what was asked of me, and I couldn't explain it.
Okay. I don't know that a quarter of a percent or a half a percent is gonna help us, but some of the, some of the variables that we're, that we're watching right now is this last year, as, as trustee Laporte said, we raised the rate 3%, and then we had a 3% increase in consumption. So that, that's a pretty big amount when you've got a 3% increase in consumption. We had been going down, we're gonna be talking later on tonight about the proposed budget, I'm gonna show the, the rates, or the consumption over the last 10 years. Consumption had been going down, down due to more efficient appliances and things like that. Pandemic came, people were staying home, so we, we have residential neighborhood, the village mostly. Our water consumption went up. It started going down a little bit as people started going back to work, but then we had a dry spring last year, and that really brought up the consumption again. Now, this next year, we've got a new residential development going in, and what comes along with that is sod, and so that's a lot of water again. So we're expecting, at least in that neighborhood, for the water consumption to be up again. So the consumption is one variable that really plays in. The other variable is how much capital improvement we, we get done. You can see on this chart here, 23, 24, the big green bar next to that is the capital improvement scheduled for '24, '25. So if we've got 9.5 million in the, in the fund right now, we've got 7.5 million approved for capital improvement next year. So that's why the big decrease in the fund balance, that's, that's one other thing. So we, in the, during the pandemic, we had to put off some projects, bids came in high, that's why we accumulated more fund balance than projected. Interest income is almost like a rate increase with a 5%, you know, short-term interest rate these days. We were looking at almost no interest income in the past few years. 5% income, interest income is really helping us out. And another factor is the DuPage. starting this summer, so that's another factor. So we do have a big balance. I know that we're, the, the plan is to hold off this year, wait and see, we're going to review, continue reviewing rates as we go forward.
Can you explain a reminder?
Hey, Todd? Uh, yeah, Joe?
Todd also men, also mentioned that the rate increase, from how I read this, the rate increase is also based on what capital improvements are being done that fiscal year in addition to EPA and other debt obligations. So it's not just randomly raising the rate 3% because we want to raise it 3%. There are capital improvements that are being done in the next three or four years that we're going to need to fund, as well as those EPA and other debt obligations. So go into that a little bit, so people understand.
Yeah, as far as the sewer fund, the big factor in the sewer fund is the debt service for the wastewater treatment plant that's going to be starting in the fall. And that's why you can see a pretty steady decline in the balance. Major infrastructure improvements should be wrapping up with the wastewater treatment plant, with the Devon X's flow facility that were both financed by debt, but it's the debt service, the level debt service payments that are, that are causing or driving the rates in the future.
To your point, Ray, of not having just a automatic increase, is that it allows, A, the board to review these things and pay attention to the variables that, you know, like this year, you know, really don't merit that kind of an increase. Now, you know, we, we walked it out here in this chart to '27, '28, that might be a different story, but as we look at it each year, these charts change, the plans change, the consumption changes, the weather changes. So we, we should, we should really do our due diligence on it and make sure that we're right sizing how those rates are put together.
Can you remind me, I'm looking at the capital project, and we have a water main replacement for $3.6 million that goes to $200,000 the year after, back to 2.5, two years after that, back to $200,000. Is there a way we can, well, one, what is the project that's costing $3.6 million? And is it a way to balance it out over those four or five years?
Yeah. The project we're currently designing, getting ready to go out the bid is the water main on North Avenue in Oak. It'll be from north, from Prospect all the way to Western, and Oak from Lake all the way down to the tracks. We're doing that in anticipation of receiving SDP funds for resurfacing. We have the funding secured for North Avenue, pretty much, for 2025, so next year we would be resurfacing North Avenue. We've applied for Oak to also get SDP funding. We're not sure that it's going to match up, so we'll have to decide whether we just do North Avenue next year and wait for the funding, or in Oak, or push North back. Those are things we have to just see where we are in line, but we're trying to get the water main done before we do the roadwork. To recall on the capital program, what we're trying to do is alternate water main one year and do a road program the next year. It is making capital budgeting a little bit different because you see a big year than a soft year. It helps with our engineering, those are projects we do in-house, so we can build or design the water main in-house with our people. It got to be a lot to do a water main project and a road program, so we're trying to see if we can do this alternating year to help, help us be able to do it, but.
Does 3.6 include the resurfacing?
No.
So this is just the water main?
This is the water main work, the, so then the transportation, MFT side of things will show the roadwork on North Avenue and Oak in 20, summer of '25.
How many water mains is this, just one?
This is, well, it's, it's the water main that is on north from Prospect to Western, which is pretty good, from Lake Street all the way down to the track. So it's, it's quite a bit of water main. It's more than we've done before, that's for sure.
What's the 2026 project? Is that another water main?
So 2026 will then be more water main. And we haven't finalized where that's going to be, whether it'll be in the downtown area or we have sections of water main where we've got like quality and fire flow-wise, there's some connections that we need to make based on our original study when we were looking at Lake Michigan, so we're looking at filling some of those gaps. So it'll probably be a combination of filling gaps and doing some downtown water main.
Yeah. It's a big impact in one year, 3.6 million, when we're talking about balancing and trying to raise the water rates or keeping them consistent, so I'm just, was curious about that.
That's why we try to keep that reserve higher, so that kind of, you work your way down, so.
That's all I had on that.
Okay, if there's no more questions, or if you have any questions, please bring them up.
So if DWC raises our water rates 3% in the middle of this year, next year are we going to raise rates?
We're going to take in all those factors. That's just, that's just one of the factors in regard to what was consumption and.
Is there a possibility to keep it still flat and not raise it, even though DWC raises our rates 3%? Is it, is it a possibility?
Well, this year they're going to raise rates and we're going to keep the rates, we're proposing keep the rates flat, but eventually that, that's not going to work.
How much will that take away from our income when they raise it? Do you know when they're going to raise it?
You're asking him loaded questions. He can't answer whether or not we're going to raise rates or not, when you don't know what the interest rates are going to be, you don't know what capital improvements you're going to have coming up, you don't know all kinds of things coming up. We could have something happen at Public Works where we need another $2 million expenditure. That's what I'm saying, there's, there's a lot of variables. Right now we have a $9.5 million balance, that's what we're going to, we're going to, we'll work that down, we'll see where we're at next year, and that's where we're going to have to redo the, you know, every year, here's where we're at, it, it changes. I was saying earlier today, you know, we're trying to budget, as soon as we put a number down or a projection, then it, then it changes. So this is our, this is a projection, but we don't really know what's going to happen for sure on that.
We should be happy that there's an increase in water and sewer rates then. Reevaluate it later.
Joey?
Okay, if there's no further, if there's no further questions, we can move on. The next item I have is the proposed operating budget review for 2024 to 2028, and I'll hand that over to staff.
Did he say 2028? Yeah, that's what. Again, it's that time of the year and I'm going to go over, mostly we're focusing on revenue, I'll go over some high-level expenses, but then we'll be going through our more detailed expenses as we review budgets for. And before we get started on this, let's just make sure everybody understands, this is just a really high-level look of what's going to happen. This is just uncategorized general information about broad subjects. We're going to have a chance to chop this up in March. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have some, right, some big, big picture stuff. We're going to get a little detail on some of the income, on some of the revenue spots, and then we'll go over some general fund balance things at the end as well. So again, we always talk about the budget being more than numbers, and that's where we've been working on our strategic plan. We've been trying more to get our strategic plan and our policy and the financial plan, make sure we're pointing those out, even with items that come up for each agenda. Our, our calendar, we start, this starts in May 1, the beginning of the year, and then we move through the process. So the first big step that we already took was our capital budget. That's where we, we've been talking about capital a lot tonight, but we work on that so that they can start on going out for bid, getting those projects lined up, start at the end of the year. So the '24, '25 capital improvement plan moves into our operating budget, that's one of the big steps. So next month, we'll be reviewing each, each department. Here's the big picture pie of where the money, where the money is coming from. So $75 million this year, we're down from over $90 million last year. A lot of that is down because of the closing of the Brewster Creek TIF, that was about $10 million in property tax increment and developer deposits. Borrowing for the wastewater treatment plant is down, and also, well, those are, those are the main items, the borrowing and the tax increment. As far as where it goes, again, we talked about capital projects and our public works, public safety are big parts of it, general government, and we've got golf, our debt I threw this in for trustee Laporte, he was asking for more details on where, where we could see where those numbers from the pie charts came in. This is our sources and uses table. It breaks it down by fund, by type of revenue, and this is just a sample of what's in the summary tables in the more detailed proposed budget that we'll, we'll be sending out. As far as our expenses, so for the operating budget, we break it into two, two pieces really, our operating budget, our capital budget. Our operating portion of the budget is about $56 million, our capital budget, $28 million. We're going to be focusing a little bit more on, on our operating. Again, here's a, just another breakdown of our revenue by fund, general fund is the bulk of it, 43%. Our main source of revenue is property taxes in the general fund, it's budgeted to be $12,870,000. That's 17% of our total revenue, 31% of our, our general fund, that's $474,000 increase from last year. So what's that, that's recognized in the increase in the pension levy from this fall that we're going to be receiving during the '24, '25 levy, that's a.
What was the decrease from?
I'm sorry?
22% decrease?
Uh, in the revenue?
Yeah. On '23, '24 budget.
From the TIF out at Brewster.
Yeah, we, but, yeah, that's our, that's our IEP loan, loans and our TIF money, sorry. Is that 95 million last year because of the bonds that we took out and also because of the TIF? So there's like a $20 million difference there? Yeah, the, the borrowing, we count that as revenue in governmental accounting, it's not really revenue, but they, it's counted as revenue. So we're not proposing, we're not proposing any increases to the levy after we recognized the, or increased the levy to, by $750,000 last year to recoup the Brewster Creek TIF closing. We're not expecting any increase to the general levy this year. Police pension contribution, this last year our contribution was just over $3 million, it could go up to $3.5 million, probably 3.4 million is what we're, what we're estimating. I think this is the, so this is the time where we say, no, we don't want to increase the levy, yes, we want to cover the full levy, or the full contribution with the, with the property tax levy. I think we'll see, we do have some money in the general fund, we'll be able to absorb some of the increases if, if that's the route we want to go. If we did increase the levy to cover the full contribution, it would be another 4% or similar to what we did this last year. Again, the village, our village portion is about 10%. We're projecting the EAV just to go up about 2%. Cook County had its triannual last year, and so it was up quite a bit, you'll see as we look at the property tax rates. Well, here's our property tax rates. Cook County, the blue on the top, swings quite a bit based on the triannual. So the rate goes down as the EAV goes up, and then as it, as the EVA, EAV is reduced, the rate goes back up. So DuPage is a little more level, and as the EAV comes up, our rate slowly goes down. Our assessed value, again, it finally crossed the mark of 2009 when our EAV peaked at $1.37 billion. In 2023, the estimate was $1.41 billion. So it took a while, but we're finally there. So Cook County is still below that level. In 22, 2022, the Cook County EAV was 95% of the 2009 EAV. So that's why the rates in Cook County go up a little bit, the EAV just still hasn't caught up to where we were back in 2009. This is that big picture I was talking about. This is 89, this represents 89% of the general fund revenue. You can see property tax there. Our income tax has gone up quite a bit, the IML, we go by the IML projections on what the income tax or the local government distributed fund will be each year, and you can see in just the four, four years, it has gone up quite a bit, from just over $5 million to now almost $7 million. So here's that income tax that I was talking about, we're budgeting at seven, just over $7 million, that's 7% of our total revenue, 21% of the general fund now, that's a $625,000 increase from last year. IML just came out with that new estimate at the end of January. They also revised the '23, '24 estimate up another $350,000. So, yeah, they've been, they've been low on those estimates ever since the pandemic. They keep revising them up. I'm not really sure they're going to keep going up, but right now, that's $1.71 per person at 41,105 people in the village. That's where they're calc, that's where we're getting with that, $7 million. That, that is still at the 6.47%. Local use tax has been pretty flat, it used to be where our online sales tax was distributed back in 2021, that was moved to sales tax. It didn't go down much, but right now, we're not projecting any increases to the local use tax, and that's about 5% of our general fund. Sales tax is 6% of our total revenue, 15% of the general fund. Sales tax budget, we're projecting a $900,000 increase, up from just over $4 million, 4.9 million. That's to account for our new businesses in town, that's the, that's for the auto mall, all the, both of those new businesses do have sales tax agreements. those new businesses do have sales tax agreements, and then part of that is being transferred over to pay back the TIF loans, so overall, the general fund will realize just $90,000 from that 900,000 increased sales tax. Home real sales tax is still doing well, $3 million, that's a $400,000 increase, we receive 1% on that, we do not receive home real sales tax on, on groceries and medical, medical purchases, or on new car purchases. Real estate transfer tax was down, this is one of the items where you put something down and then it changes, so in the 1st of January, we did have a, a transfer stamp that was over $100,000, so that is a, is a big chunk of the $600,000, so those can go either way, we've only had one really big real estate transfer stamp this year, but they have slowed down considerably from a few years ago when the, when the rates were quite a bit lower. Average sale price of the home rose 2%, 374,000, so a stamp for the average home is, is just about $1,000 these days. Building permits have picked up, we're at over $1 million this year right now, we've had a couple of big ones come in, we're budgeting about 850,000 for next year. Gaming tax has been pretty steady, we're estimating 410,000, in this year we're budgeting 400,000 for next year, that goes to fund our, our economic incentives, our B, our BTA plan. Here's our new major revenue, this is interest income, we're, we're budget, we're estimating 900,000 for the 23-24 year, we're budgeting 750,000 for next year, I don't know what interest rates are going to do for the rest of the year, we have a lot of our operating funds in, in one year going out, laddered out monthly, but if those go down, then our, our interest rate will, will go down as well. Moving on to our water fund, again, we were talking about our water rates, we're budgeting just over 13 million, that's a $265,000 increase from last year's budget, just based on the consumption going up, the consumption history and the residential development. Here is that consumption I was talking about where it picked up, in, in the middle of this chart here, you can see where it picked up during the pandemic, started going back down, last summer it picked up again, and that's kind of estimating where we're, where we're looking at, so our revenue has picked up, we started raising the rates back in 2017, 2018, when we converted over to Lake Michigan water, back then it was projected rates would need to double to pay for the project, right now we're up about 90, 95, 98% from that 2012 rate, so we're still under the 100% increase that was projected, I'm not sure that helps anybody when they get their high water bill, but it, we're, I think we're still doing well as far as getting through that Lake Michigan project. As far as sewer, 6,750,000 for charges, that's 200,000 over this year, we're, we're estimating that we're going to receive about 7 million in sewer charges, that includes surcharges and fines, we're expecting those to eventually drop down as, as.
Fix their filtration systems?
Yeah, as, yeah, so we've seen quite a bit of revenue from that, it has helped out the fund, but I, that's not something that we can count on continuing to go. For Gulf, we're expecting a 7% increase up to 1,647, that's for the, for Gulf program fees, we're going to let the Gulf, talk about that more when they talk about their department, the fees, rates, expenses, the whole, whole thing as they go forward. Food and beverage is looking at a 6% increase up to 1.2 million. A quick, again, a quick look at our operating expenditures, I kind of, the green levels out, takes out the bond refunding, debt refunding, where it kind of duplicates some of the revenue, also takes out our police pension payments, you can see the operating is starting to pick up, that includes our debt service on the, in the water and the, and the sewer fund, so that's why that, that is picking up. This pie just, pie chart just shows how much is personnel, 50% is personnel services. Again, public works, almost, most of that pie there includes streets, water, sewer, parking. As far as the general fund then, our cash balances, we're estimating to start at about 22 million, over 22 million in cash, that's just our cash balances, that doesn't include some of our restricted funds, we'll show that later as we talk about our fund balance projections. Revenues are, are projected to be 30, our budget of 32 million, 27 million expenses, and then there's transfers to funds as far as central services, vehicle replacements, we're also proposing $2 million transferred to the municipal building fund to, for our ongoing maintenance projects, other municipal building needs, that would be, give us an ending balance of around 21 million. Surplus would have been 477,000 before the $2 million transfer out, a lot of that, most of that surplus, we were going to be pretty close to even until the IML came out with their revised income tax increase of over $500,000, so that's a, a big part of that. Again, transfers to central services, 1.2 million, vehicle replacements, 600,000. Our police pension transfer this year for, would be just over $3 million. Vehicle replacement has been an issue over the last few years, we have two large dump trucks that were ordered the prior year, two more dump trucks that were ordered this year that still haven't been received, so that's why the budget, 1,781,000, that includes basically four trucks, I can't remember how much they are a piece, two and a quarter? 200,000 a piece, yeah, four trucks, and then I think they're going to be, they got to keep ordering them because it takes so long to.
Been budgeted for what, three years now, two years?
Three years.
Interest on 500,000, the last year it's been 5 and a half percent, so at least we're making money on the money we're going to spend.
We're making a little bit, not as much as the cost of the trucks.
Just paid for the taxes.
Do we know when we're going to get them? Can we change brands? Is there anything to do?
They're all, they're all the same. Nobody can get trucked right now.
All right, snapshot.
Capital projects, I brought, I bring this up, this is the ARPA money, I just want to keep you up to date on the ARPA money, 5 and a half million we received in ARPA money this year, we're going to be, our balance is starting at about 3.8 million, 3 million of that was in the capital budget, 500 for the meter program, 500 for the sewer rehabilitation, and the 2 million for Devon Avenue excess flow. Budget snapshot, okay, no, so we're not planning on raising taxes, general fund levies flat, we'll be looking at the police pension contributions, our calculation is completed over the summer, but we'll plan on using general fund balance for as much as we can in that, in that regard. Non-union wages, 4%, no additional employees, and then we just talked about water sewer rates not being increased, and our capital about 27 million. So general fund, this is basically our unassigned balance, it's a little lower than our cash balance, it does take into account some of the restricted funds, some of the obligations that we already have. So we've talked about uses before, one thing in our capital budget that did get pushed off out of our, beyond this scope was our Country Creek Stream Bank, stormwater, we've been talking about stormwater, 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 but Dan has been having meetings with the neighbors, we're moving on that, basically it's just including our engineering, and so that needs to be taken into account as we look at our general fund balance. And we already looked at our water fund and our sewer fund, as far as those projections go. So that, that is it, unless there's anything else you want me to go back, talk about?
Todd, this is Joe.
Yeah, Joe, trustee Laporte.
Please go back to, please go back to the where the money comes from pie chart, and if everybody could get their pen and piece of paper out, write these numbers down. That's slide number five, okay, if you add everything up there, 83% is other tax, 17% is property tax, so 17% or the property taxes only cover, cover 17% of our bill, 83% comes from other sources, and if you look at that dollar wise, 83% equals 62,425 dollars, or 425,946, so 62, 425, 946, and then the 17% from the property tax is 12,870,519. I just think it's important that we know where the money comes from, and it's not all on the backs of the property taxpayers, they do pay a nice portion of it, but 83% comes from other sources, and that's why I had Todd put this chart together, so you can see where the money comes from, that's all.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, our property taxes, we keep our general property tax levy, it does become a smaller portion, I think our sales tax has really increased with the new businesses, it will continue to, and the home rule, the switch from utility taxes to home real sales tax years ago has continued to, to benefit. Anything else, trustee Laporte?
Oh, that's it, if there's nothing else, any other questions? If not, thank you Todd for everything.
We're going to see the detail in two weeks. Get your, sharpen your pencils, departments. Thank you Chairman Laporte.
Not going to start early for the first budget review, but I have planned for our second meeting in March to start early, just to make sure that we get everybody reviewed.
Okay, so second one in March, we'll be starting early.
And it's taco award night, so we're going to have award winning tacos.
Fantastic. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by trustee Daney, second by trustee Hopkins, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunnstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.